We ask that you sign up your name and address if you're participating remotely, that you can sign up on the chat. The clerk, if you're participating remotely and wanna have a public comment, you would put your hand up or put your information into the chat. And the clerk will invite you to be a panelist, which will then allow you to turn on your camera for the duration of your comment, which is a requirement for our rules. And although you won't get a response unless in this meeting, someone will follow up with you after the meeting if you have a specific question that requires a response. And please limit your speaking time to no more than three minutes. Do we have anybody signed up in the remote? Do we have anybody signed up in the room?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to the next agenda item of the.
Hey, Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, you know, since this is considered a laid up session.
This is a public comment period that we're in, and you're not a member of the public, so I think this is out of order at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? We'll move on to our consent agenda. The clerk, please. Oh, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent.
The clerk, please read the consent agenda into the record.
The consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes from the October twentieth twenty twenty five regular meeting, the meeting minutes from the October twenty ninth twenty twenty five special meeting, second reading ordinance number twenty twenty five ten dash twenty A, an ordinance amending chapter sixteen of the Mountain View Municipal Code regarding landscaping requirements, resolution number twenty twenty five eleven seventeen A, a resolution of the town of Mountain View, Colorado, hiring Armstrong Sweeping, Inc. to perform snow removal services in the town and authorizing the mayor to execute the same. Resolution number twenty twenty five eleven seventeen B, a resolution of the town of Mountain View, Colorado, amending the agreement with Onset Solutions, Inc., to perform information technology services in the town and authorizing the mayor to execute the same. Resolution number twenty twenty five eleven seventeen C, a resolution of the town of Mountain View, Colorado, amending an agreement with Dactra Tech LLC to perform photo radar services in the town and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I asked for the motion out of sequence. May I have a motion? Since we're, there's a second meeting in the court, the consent agenda, the clerk, please read the law call vote.
Councilmember Ogden.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Debnar.
Yes.
Councilmember Dennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Unger.
Yes.
Motion passes. We now must, thank you. So tonight, we have some special guests with us to start out, and Ryan and Kent, who are with Mile High Accessibility Consultants, are here with us tonight in the front row. Ryan is the project manager and Kent is the executive consultant with Mile High. As a reminder, council chose Mile High Accessibility Consultants after they met on the contract to review the town's compliance with the ADA requirements and draft an ADA transition plan. Tonight's presentation is a progress report to inform council of where we are in the project before the final steps are taken, after which point the proposed ADA transition plan will come before council for approval and adoption. So thank you for being with us here tonight, and Ryan and Kent, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for having us here today to go over our draft transition plan. And you're at the driving wheel.
You might wanna take the mic out because of the recording and people who are participating remotely. Speaking directly into the mic really helps, so thank you.
I'll do that. Is that okay? All right, so this is our presentation for our progress report for the ADA draft transition plan. First of all, I go into more detail, and we go into more detail, with the actual transition plan. But to summarize, as you all know, Mountain View is a whole new municipality in Jefferson County. The figure I got for the population was five thirty, and eight point six residents have disabilities within Mountain View. And that's considerably lower than the national average of twenty five percent. Just to give you some context, there are seventy million people as of twenty twenty two that have disabilities in the United States. As we all grow older, including myself, I'm a baby boomer, future demand increases as the population ages. So to circumvent the accessibility issues throughout the country, the ADA ensures equitable access for all residents. Just a brief introduction into the ADA. It's a federal civil rights law. It's not a building code. It's nothing other than a law that was signed into effect in nineteen ninety. And it prohibits disability-based discrimination. It also requires equal access for everyone to programs, services, and activities. The town undertook an ADA self-evaluation to identify the barriers that exist within the town's accessibility. Just a quick, uh, quick summary. The transition plan will outline the methodology to evaluate the facilities and the public right-of-way, the sidewalks, streets, curb ramps throughout the town. It also gives you a framework for improvements over the next decade. And that decade number is a little ambiguous. Depending on what some of the barriers to accessibility are and the budgets and things of that course, it can exceed a decade. It supports inclusive policies, programs, and facilities. And I'll give you a brief overview of the ADA. It consists of five titles. Title one is one about employment, and it requires reasonable accommodations and a prohibitive discrimination in hiring and employment. Title two is the one that the town falls under, requires equal access to services, programs, and activities. And that includes transportations, the municipal court, voting, and town meetings. Title three is the private businesses such as restaurants, retail, and hotels. It covers new constructions and modifications. That must be accessible. Existing facilities must remove barriers when feasible. Title four is telecommunications, which requires relay services for individuals with hearing impairments. That's a little outdated now because text, phone texting has kind of overtaken that. Title five is just the miscellaneous that prohibits coercion, threats, retaliation. It also includes Department of Justice regulatory guidance and twenty ten ADA standards. The twenty ten ADA standards is all of the specific measurements and requirements, the building requirements, accessibility requirements for the town. So the ADA requirements are, of course, program accessibility, equal participation, reasonable modification when requested, integration of services to make them accessible, effective communication, which covers a whole gamut of things to achieve effective communication. Requires the town to have an ADA coordinator and a public notice of the ADA requirements and grievance procedures. And it also does require a variety of policies that are ADA compliant too. Physical access is pretty simple. It means facilities must be free of barriers that prevent participation. And barriers or any of those obstacles like a narrow door, inaccessible bathroom, or access or use of a facility right of way toward the town park. Program access kind of overlaps. It could include physical accessibility to achieve accessibility for a specific program. It also covers the town's policies, practices, communications, and procedures. And it requires people with disabilities to have an equal opportunity to participate in all the things, all the programs and services that the town offers. And it can be achieved through making a facility accessible by renovations and modifications, and non-structural methods by having ADA compliant policies and procedures. The purpose of the transition plan, it's basically your roadmap to achieve ADA compliance. It identifies and outlines strategies to remove physical and programmatic barriers, sorry about that. And includes a list of barriers, how you can remove those barriers, and the time schedule for implementation. And also, a really important aspect of it, it also has to include the official who's responsible for implementation. The scope of Mile High's transition plan for Mountain View includes where we evaluated the town's policies, practices, and procedure, procedures. And we also provided a list of policy templates that the town can adopt and then train the staff on too. It's going to include public outreaches. That will be our next meeting too, and public input. One of the ways we achieve pub, public input, the public input requirement required by the ADA is a ser, a public outreach survey, and then also a pub, our public right-of-way survey too. And also, the transition plan requires that we take a look at all the facilities, the town hall, for accessibility and document any barriers to accessibility. And then we also survey the public right-of-way. The pie sauce out there on skeeters from time to time with their yellow vests. The public outreach survey, which the mayor and you folks may have seen, it identifies barriers to access and evaluates the effectiveness of existing policies and procedures. And it helps you folks understand the priorities of your residents and stakeholders. Survey responses are confidential, of course, and the results will help the town, guide the town in planning and implement, sorry, implementing accessibility improvements. Also, we recommend it should be widely available, and the mayor's working on that. Public right-of-way needs assessment survey. It was designed to collect feedback on accessibility within the public right-of-way. So there are questions about if you use a wheelchair, curb ramps, things of that sort. It helps identify the obstacles to the street access. And probably the greatest feature of the, that needs assessment survey is that it helps you prioritize what inaccessible aspects of the right-of-way are most important to the citizens and the public. It will help enhance mobility for the residents and visitors. That's its key goal. It will help the town in its planning and design and implementation of future accessibility improvements. And this is Ryan. Turn it over to Ryan.
All right, so I'll be going into more of the details for our facility audits and public right-of-way audits. For facilities, we prioritize it in four different manners. Priority one is high, and we would recommend the town remediate those barriers within the first twelve months. These are usually findings worth little to no cost, are easy to remediate. These would be lowering Hoover Cow dispenser, removing tripping hazards, items of those nature. Priority two is our important priority. We recommend the town remediate these barriers within twenty-four months. These tend to be barriers with lower budgetary impact in relation to degree of access and barriers that impede access to higher numbers of people with disabilities. These would include relocating toilets if they're out of the range, lowering sinks if they're too high, and those kinds of barriers. Priority three is moderate. These are what we would recommend completing within the first three years. These are typically the more difficult items to remediate. So within a town hall, the exterior ramp would fall under this priority because it's not compliant and it's gonna be a little more difficult and costly to remediate. So those would also include upgrading parking spaces, leveling sidewalks out. And then we have priority four, which is employee-only spaces. So these would be employee area only, and these barriers would only need to be addressed if an employee with a disability has photo reasonable accommodation. We provided cost estimates for barrier removals within the facility, town hall, town park, Berkeley Church, and the public right-of-way. These cost estimates are ranges, so we gave a low and a high range. As we all know, construction costs can vary year to year, and typically they tend to go up. So these are budgetary numbers, and if some of these projects are pushed out five to ten years, I would estimate that those cost estimates could go up just depending on construction. We use data from recent construction and renovation projects. We've done a lot of work in this area, the city of Edwater. We did their self-evaluation and transition plan, and even though it's so close to here, we were able to use those construction costs from our previous project. We provide a facility transition plan database. It's an Excel database that lists every barrier to accessibility that we discovered. Within the database, we include a finding number, an area description. If it's exterior, we provided latitude and longitude coordinates, a description of what the barrier was, our as-built conditions, so that's gonna be our measurements, our slopes. And then we provide our recommendations on how to remediate these barriers. We based all the facilities and town park off the twenty ten ADA standards. And then we also include the barrier priority, which we just went over, our cost estimate range, and photographs of each findings. Facility findings summary report, so we included town hall and town park together. Total findings within that area was fifty-six. Out of those fifty-six findings, twenty-eight are those high barriers, which are easy to remediate. And price range was about fourteen hundred to twenty-three hundred. For important, we had six barriers with a budget range of six thousand to eighty-seven hundred. Moderate was seventeen findings. That's gonna be mostly all the exterior work for that area. And then with the budget range of sixty-one thousand to about eighty-two thousand. And then low, like we said, employee-only spaces, we discovered five ADA barriers with a budget of thirty-five hundred to five thousand. The mayor had us look at Berkeley United Methodist Church for this reason. We have our town hall, or you have your town hall meetings here. Since this is available to the public, we wanna make sure this space is accessible for people with disabilities. So we looked at the parking lot, the ramp up here, this space, and then the restroom around the corner. And out of those areas, we found nine barriers have a high priority, three barriers with an important priority, and one barrier, barrier of a moderate priority, with a total budget of ninety-eight hundred to thirteen thousand to make this space fully ADA compliant. Here are the total numbers for all three of those spaces. So to make the town hall, town park, and Berkeley Church fully accessible, we would anticipate a budget of eighty-two thousand to about a hundred and eleven thousand.
Does that also include both the areas, right-of-way areas in town? Does it mean?
No, so that's next. Yeah, that's. So another aspect was we looked at all the public sidewalks within the town. So this includes pedestrian access routes, which is your sidewalks, curb ramps and blended transitions, accessible pedestrian signals, pedestrian pushbikes, alternate pedestrian access routes, detectable warning surfaces, pedestrian street crossings, and passenger loading zones. So we prioritize sidewalks a lot differently because of the cost and the difficulty to remediate these. For the public right-of-way, we use the PROAG standards, which is, Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines. So currently, they're still considered a guideline. However, the Department of Justice is in the work of finalizing those. So these are best practices, best standards, guidelines to go off of. So we look at these based off this table. So we prioritize it based off the kind of road it is. So arterial roads are gonna have a lot more access to facilities and programs. Collector roads are access to various programs. Local roads, access to fewer programs. And then residential roads and shared use paths with minor access to few programs. Within the town, we will only be utilizing arterial roads, collector roads, and residential roads. We'll go into more detail with that. And then based off what we discovered within the public right-of-way, we use this table to determine an estimated timeline to remediate those barriers. We would like to kind of figure out the town's annual budget for this kind of work before we start putting dates down. So that'll be one of the upcoming steps we have to do with the town. This is, the first table was for sidewalk prioritization. This is curb ramp prioritization. Same thing, just classified differently. So the Mountain View streets that we surveyed, and this is how we prioritize them. Ames Street as a residential road, Chase Street as a residential road, Eaton Street as a residential road, Sheridan Street will be an arterial road. West Forty-third Ave is a collector road. Benton Street is a residential, Dupue Street residential, Fenton residential. And then we have West Forty-first Ave as a collector, and West Forty-fourth Ave is a arterial. So we compile this in an Excel database like we did with the facilities and park. It pretty much has the same columns that the facility did. So we have a finding number, area description, latitude and longitude coordinates, so we know exactly where these barriers exist within the sidewalks, finding description, as-built conditions, recommendations to remove the barrier, milestone dates for barrier removal, the PROAG guideline citations, our barrier priorities, our cost estimate range, status of finding, and photographs of findings. All right, so this is a summary. So protruding objects and vertical clearances, this is gonna be shrubs and tree branches within the sidewalk. So we, the sidewalk needs to be clear and free of all protruding objects and vertical clearances. So these were noted in our transition plan database, and these are usually the responsibility of the residents to take care of. So there were seventy-two findings where there were shrubs and tree branches within that required space for sidewalks.
Excuse me, Brian.
Yeah.
Would you prefer people, council members, to interrupt you with questions?
Yeah, yeah.
So just ask for the floor if you want to.
Um, maybe I missed this, but can we go over what a collector street is?
Yeah, so we have a better description coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was like, I don't know.
No, yeah, it's kind of confusing. But yeah, we're gonna go into more detail in a few slides. Everyone else? Continued, continuous width of sidewalks. So this would be any sidewalks that are not wide enough or that don't exist, that need to exist. So there were six of those. I believe most of those are on Sheridan. We have those sidewalks that are about thirty-two inches wide, really narrow. So within that, we would have a budget of eighty-six thousand to a hundred and seventy-ten thousand. Those usually require extensive modifications and engineering.
I mean, like the Sheridan sidewalks would be one of those situations where it would require the private owner to give us permission to change those sidewalks. So how do you anticipate?
Um, so in front of their spots, it would depend on how those agreements are ready with the town. So do you lease those spaces out, or?
The town owns the right-of-way, but the right-of-way is narrow and the private property owners, you know.
Property and.
Yeah.
So the town would be able to take easement of those spaces to make ADA compliance, so they would be able to take that. So for PROAG, they are supposed to be forty-eight inches wide. I think some of these stinier ones are about thirty-two inches. So you're not taking a ton of space. And I think most of those went into asphalt driveways. I don't think a lot came very close to the facilities, and if they did, it would just be a matter of landscaping. So I think you would have to pull easement on that to widen those sidewalks because you can't push it into the streets. Sheridan's are a really narrow road for cars, so you would definitely have to come into the business space.
Also, Don't you have to pay to take someone's property, though? I thought like in Wheat Ridge was taking like Wadsworth properties and they were having to pay people for them. So is that like something that the town would have to do? And I'm assuming that's not in the quotes that we have.
That is correct. That is not in the quotes, and I'm pretty sure that would vary from cities and towns. There might be a policy that would have to be developed for the town to approach those. I think that the space that is lacking with forty-eight inch sidewalks is pretty annoying. But that would probably be something that the town would have to figure out with those business owners. Like, that's not included in the cost.
Thank you.
So for curb ramps, there's a total findings of two hundred and eighty-three. So most of the curb ramps are too steep and are lacking detectable warning systems. So within those two hundred and eighty-three findings, I would say probably four or five findings are per curb ramp. And so when we did the budgeting, we would include removing the whole corner and both curb ramps and making them fully accessible. So those findings are high, but it's pretty much multiple findings per curb. So to replace the total, all the curb ramps, not all of them, but most of them, the budget would be around three hundred and fifty-eight thousand to five hundred and thirty thousand. That's pretty standard with these older towns and cities, the curb ramps were built before PROAG came out, but they are out of compliance.
And I remember when we were speaking before the presentation, if I understand it correctly, the curb, the ramps that we put in on Forty-first Avenue are already out of compliance. Is that correct?
So they meet most of the standards. A lot of the issues were the detectable warnings. They were full width. So I think, trying to remember off the top of my head, they were four to five inches short on each side. A requirement is that they have to be full width. So with those, you can typically remediate the curb ramp without replacing the entire curb ramp. But I think some of the new ones still had excessive slopes too. And then a lot of them led to nowhere. So I don't know if there's future planning of adding sidewalks on the south side of Forty-first, but a lot of those curb ramps lead to someone's yard.
Yeah, the south side is, is Wheat Ridge.
Right.
So.
So that would be.
Can we coordinate with Wheat Ridge?
Yeah, Wheat Ridge is doing the same project currently, not with us, but with another firm. So I'm sure that will be addressed in their transition plan.
But I mean, if our side of the ramp going across Forty-first leads to nowhere, is that our, is that our responsibility?
Yeah, I think they shouldn't have been installed because they don't lead to a sidewalk. So you want your curb ramps to connect to your pedestrian access routes or sidewalks. And if you're installing curb ramps that don't lead to a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, someone that's. someone that's visually impaired wouldn't know that because you're leading them with an accessible route, a curb ramp, to a non-accessible space on the other street, side of the street.
I anticipate Forty-first in particular being difficult for our community because those curbs were just improved. And so each one of those needing to also have additional work done. I just want to make sure that we all understand that like the ADA requirements have changed since those were done.
When were they installed?
Twenty. No, it had to be, it was, I don't know.
Oh, like the, that was the curb with previously.
Yeah. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So PRO-AG's been around since twenty thirteen, I believe. But like I said, it's still a guideline. They did finalize it, but it hasn't been offered by the Department of Justice. And then, so if, if you're not going off PRO-AG, you still have to go off the twenty-ten ADA standards, which still have the same slopes, the detectable warnings still need to be full width. So if they didn't meet the twenty-ten standards, they're in violation. If they didn't meet PRO-AG, you're fine, just until PRO-AG's formal.
When do we anticipate PRO-AG being updated by ADA standards?
It's been waiting for years. So it's hard to say. They did put a final on the standards, well, guidelines, so they can't change anymore after that. The final process is in the Department of Justice's hands. It just depends when they finally accept it. But CDOT also requires that towns and cities that have roads with CDOT have this and they use PRO-AG as well. So CDOT has their specific standards that go off of PRO-AG guidelines.
Thank you.
Pedestrian street crossings, slopes, so these are at any intersection where the curb ramps lead to. We had a total number of findings of thirty-eight. This is typically an expensive cost because you're removing a huge section of asphalt to get those slopes compliant. So our estimated budget for that was a hundred and ninety-six thousand to two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Sidewalk slopes, so we use a digital smart level to assess the sidewalk slopes. We found a number of a hundred and twenty-six findings with cross slopes. Typically cross slopes that were out of compliance with an estimated budget range of two-sixty-five to three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. And then lastly, I believe, is sidewalk surfaces. So this is gonna be the condition of the sidewalks. So this includes deteriorated concrete, spalling concrete, tripping hazards. There's a lot of big trees in the town. So a lot of the sidewalks are heating from the tree roots, which is a common issue in this area. So we discovered three-hundred-and-nine findings with a cost estimate range of seventy-six thousand to a hundred and eight thousand. So, yes.
A question about the sidewalks and the trees heating it up. What is your remedy for that, about damaging the trees?
Typically, we recommend hiring an arborist to identify if these roots under the sidewalk aren't going to unfortunately kill the tree or if they can cut the roots as a safe spot for the tree to where we can rip up the concrete and re-level it.
I've seen some places where over in the Wheat Ridge side, it seems like they've ground down some of the sidewalk to make it.
So that's, yes, yes ma'am. So one of our recommendations for anything under two inches would be to do the grinding to eliminate that tripping hazard. There's a lot of companies that just, that's all they do. We recommend per, every inch you grind back twelve inches, so we're not making a steep slope. Just grind it a little section back. When I was talking about arborists, that's more of the really significant heaves. But a lot of, I think, within the town, a lot of it can be ground down with a concrete grinder. So for our totals in the public right of way, we identified eight-hundred-and-thirty-four barriers with a cost estimate of nine-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand to one-point-three million. These, in other words, can fluctuate significantly because typically with right of way barriers, we, depending on the road and the access to pro barriers, there, it could be ten to fifteen years out till some of these get fixed just because of the cost estimates and the difficulty to achieve them. And then we'll go into, so arterial roads, these are gonna have the higher priority because they have access to more facilities and programs that the town offers. So there was a total of fifty-four findings for that arterial road, which is Sheridan Boulevard and West Forty-fourth, with a budget of two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand to two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. The collector right of way totals would include West Forty-first and West Forty-third with a total of ninety-six findings with a cost estimate range of fifty-six thousand to seventy-six thousand. And then residential right of way totals, which would include all of the other streets, there were a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-four findings, seven-hundred-and-seven thousand to nine-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. Can we go into the types of roads?
It was that one, that was your listing of streets, but maybe you could expand on collectors.
I thought it was coming up. Collector roads are gonna, or sorry, arterial roads are gonna be your main roads of the town. So that would obviously include Sheridan and then West Forty-fourth. So those are the roads that have the most access to the town's facilities and programs. And that's where pretty much all your businesses are. And then we included West Forty-third, is that where Town Hall is? Yep, West Forty-third is a collector because Town Hall is on that road. So those are roads that have less businesses and facilities on them, but they still do. So here we go, arterial's main priority because that's, that's where all the businesses are. Collectors are second priority because that's where we have some businesses, not a lot. And then residential is just gonna be everything else.
So we're gonna wrap it up. First of all, I want to commend the town for undertaking an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. I think you all would be pretty shocked at how many large cities, medium-sized cities and small towns that do not have one and the requirement's been in place for a long time. I would say almost no small towns have ADA self-evaluation or transition plans. So congratulations on your efforts on that. And the reason they're doing it is because it supports your goal for inclusive, an inclusive and accessible community, which is commendable. Also, it fulfills the ADA requirements and demonstrates proactive commitment to equitable access. And a sidebar on that, if the Department of Justice comes to Mountain View with a Project Civic Access Actu, you'll be able to demonstrate that you have a transition plan that you comply with the ADA, unlike a lot of your neighbors that have difficulties with the Department of Justice. It's here to identify your physical, programmatic barriers. It'll give you a clear path on how to remove those barriers. It's gonna have some priorities with some, some schedule or suggested schedules for remediation, which that's where we really work closely with the town. Because we can't just say, you gotta fix this in six months without any path to get that done. It's gonna provide, like I said, the scheduling and prioritization. It's gonna help you provide cost-effective barrier removal strategies. So, because we all know and the Department of Justice knows that most state and local governments don't have an unlimited budget. So it's gonna give you a cost-effective way to take care of this.
Along those lines, is there sort of a percentage of your annual budget that is anticipated to be a reasonable amount to use for the remediation?
In our experience, it's been all over the map. And we understand that budgets vary from town to town, city to city. We've seen ten percent in some places, twenty percent. You have larger cities that have a larger tax base and more access to funding. They may do up to twenty percent. Some say five percent, you know? It just depends because, you know, every budget is different. Also, one of the things that we will do through the transition plan process is to give you some resources on where you can get some grants. CDOT participates in a lot of road improvements. They've been working on Sheridan through Edgewater and stuff. And that's an option too, as far as the narrow sidewalks and all. And the thing with CDOT is that they're not gonna give you a grant unless you have a transition plan. So that's one thing in your favor. Also, the transition plan program promotes transparency by tracking progress and documenting accessibility improvements. And as you all know, complying with the ADA is an ongoing process. You know, if you're considering renovations or whatever, you should revisit those barriers, make sure that they are compliant. And then, as I said, review the transition plan periodically to make sure it's up to date. One of the most important things is to document as you improve barriers and remove barriers. Make sure you document that. So there's no question that you're making progress on barrier removal.
I have a question about that specifically. With the trees and shrubs that are growing in the right of way and blocking sidewalk areas, how, you know, typically how we handle that is code enforcement and it takes time. Is there, um, do you get points as a town for having that code enforcement in place? Or do you have, is it just like you really have to keep the branches out of the way? You know, it's kind of weighing whether or not you wanna proactively have a policy where we, as a town, keep all those branches out of the way? Or we just use code enforcement and it takes time?
Now, you do get points for having code enforcement. And if you looked in the draft transition plan, I did put some sections with those specific codes on maintenance and repairs and obstructions. And with this town, as we found with Edgewater Two, there are a lot of giant trees and lovely landscapes and stuff. So it takes a little bit of effort and time. Edgewater had, their code enforcement person, I think he took Ryan out with him so he could specifically learn what an obstruction was. But it just takes time. And then you've got to have the cooperation of the residents too. You know, it could be a rental property or whatever. So then there's that extra layer where you have to reach the owner. And then the owner has to take care of it. So you do get points for having it. It's an ongoing process. I mean, it happens every spring and summer. So even when they come back, they grow back. So that's the tricky part.
Did you encounter anything that you didn't anticipate when you were going through and studying the town of Mountain View?
I don't think so. Did you, Ryan? No.
And so in comparison to other small towns? Well, because I think anybody, you know, seeing your presentation is gonna be a little like scared.
Overwhelmed.
Overwhelmed by the money involved and, you know, how to, how to approach this. But I think that the transition plan, that's exactly designed to help us slowly eat that all down.
Right, and it's very common. There is always, you know, and that's why I gave Ryan the numbers pages. There's always that, I wouldn't overstate it, say shock, but it is a surprise. And public right of way is very expensive to, to make compliant. And especially with a town that's older. You know, you have these new developments and everything and they've got their design for all the other right of ways. So it's a lot easier for them. So it's more difficult, which is compounded by the fact that the budget's smaller too. So it's a real challenge. And that's why we're here to help you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alton?
My question is two-part, and I'll try not to cough. If any of you have gotten over a bad cold, you know, for fourteen days or two weeks, whichever comes first, you cough lingers. So that's what's happening. Yeah, I feel fine. Doctor, I'm not contagious at all, growing bigger. My question is two-part, and I will connect them. Let's take Mountain View out of this church situation. If a church is just on its own, does the government insist that they are ADA compliant? Nope.
So churches are one of the few that are fully exempt from the ADA. But when you start hosting public events or town hall meetings, that's when, only the space that's used for those needs to be compliant. So, and that's why we only evaluated the parking, the space and the restroom upstairs.
That's what I kind of thought when I see old churches and they have a heck of people get up there and there's no ramp or anything. So they will not be sharing the cost of this renovation for this area with us.
I do not know the answer to that.
Other questions from other council members or?
Perfect. Well, so I think next steps are to get the public surveys out, give the public a chance to have some time to fill those out. I think maybe we talked about maybe having an op for at least a month. And then once we get that input back from the public, we'll incorporate it into the draft transition plan. And then we'll host a public outreach meeting for any public input. And then we'll incorporate that into the final self-evaluation transition plan. And that's when it's passed over to the city council. It's a very final good one. Sorry, town council.
We're used to it. Thank you so much. So just for councils, for the record, we are gonna get the survey, the paper survey will be mailed out sometime next week probably. And it'll be similar to the survey, the other survey that we just did in terms of process. It'll just go to residents in town, not property owners who don't live in town. It's what we're thinking, right?
Yep.
Because about half of our properties are rented. And so that way you get all of the people who actually live in those rentals. But we're not trying to get the input from people who own property but don't live in town.
Correct. That's good.
And then the commercial area, the commercial establishments will be done. And then we'll get those surveys to our clerk. They'll be returned anonymously. They won't be opened in the office or to you from there. So you can compile all of those.
Perfect.
Thank you for all your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate everyone for your time.
It's a little scary. Serious numbers. How many veterans have said things like this? If that's not an awkward problem, then I will go with this. So we'll move on to agenda item number seven. May I please hear a motion to bring agenda item seven to the floor? I move to approve ordinance of our twenty-twenty-five dash eleven dash seventeen eight, ordinance of the town of Mountain View Colorado, and then being chapter four of the Mountain View Civil Code to implement a voter-approved lodging type. A second. And our town attorney is gonna speak to this ordinance.
Okay, so we'll go with it pretty broadly. And if you have any questions, some happy to go into pretty detail. So this ordinance comes as a result of the ballot issue that was passed in this last election related to a new lodging tax in the town at eight percent. And so this codifies the administration, enforcement and collection of that new lodging tax in the town. Generally, it has a very wide net to ensure that whenever lodging services are provided in the town, it's the vendor who is responsible for collecting that tax and remitting it to the town. The Department of Revenue does not administer, collect or enforce lodging taxes in the state of Colorado. So it has to be done by the town. So vendor is really the key term here and is defined really broadly to account for really anyone who is in charge of facilitating those lodging services. So just by. So just by way of quick example, if you own a short-term rental in the town and you are renting it out on a third-party marketplace, for instance Airbnb, if those transactions are coming through Airbnb, then it's actually Airbnb who's responsible for collecting, remitting, and paying the tax to the town. If you are not using a third-party vendor, if you are just putting it out on your own website or, you know, renting out to people by word of mouth, then you are responsible for collecting and remitting that tax. So the definition of vendor is really broad purposely to catch whomever is doing the actual facilitation of the transactions of lodging. Otherwise, this gives our treasurer pretty broad discretion to be able to enforce these provisions in the case that they are not collecting, remitting, and paying the tax in accordance with the ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm happy for you to be answered.
Councilmember Demner?
So I just wanted to, I guess, ask the question since, you know, this was a ballot measure and we haven't yet sworn in candidates which are also on the ballot. Does it make sense to maybe table this until those council members are sworn in?
That's a policy decision. Legally, you certainly don't have to do that. Legally, this code changed, this ordinance, needs to be effective January one to align with the ballot issue. So with two readings required by our Home Rule Charter, that doesn't give you a whole lot of time if you do table it or you have two meetings in December.
No, because the first meeting was a workshop on the first, which was not going to be a workshop to be starting in. It was set in the first town.
So then I recommend that you do pass it right. And the new council, when they're sworn in, just like with any issue, they will hear on second reading and they can propose any amendments they would like to. And we can go from there. That would at least give us the timeline to be able to get this affected before January one, without doing any repercussions, which is my preference.
Thank you.
Got it?
Any other questions or discussion?
Well, I mean, didn't the town pass it, so we have to do it. So I don't understand, I guess. Can you explain that?
I guess currently the election results are not certified yet. And I think that may be the reason why Kansas is a little torn in there.
Well, I get that, but we have to pass it because the town voted it, right? Isn't that how that works? So like either town, like our council couldn't shoot it down because it won on the ballot, right?
If we don't, I guess the question is if we didn't adopt this. I think there's two questions here. What's the advantage to delaying it? How does that in any way serve the town? That's my first question to Councilmember Demner.
I guess in my mind, I was just seeing that the candidate being elected was on the ballot just like this.
But how does, how does having the candidates, how did the candidate's election connect to this ballot issue? How are those two connected? I'm trying to understand that.
That they're both on the ballot, but we have, we don't have the candidates swearing in here, but we have this ballot measure.
So in terms of certifying election, when you're dealing with a measure that passes in the margin that this did, the certification isn't going to change it. Where there are much smaller margins for the candidates, which is requiring the certification to happen prior to swearing them in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that help?
Yeah, that's, that's very well.
I think, I think Councilmember Unger?
No, that's, that's what I was going to ask was about the range for votes and certification.
And a lot of times, the county clerks will go by a certain percentage to know whether or not it would be a recall or a recount. Sorry, recount versus an actual certification and passing. So because of the amount of yes votes for this, we're safe to move forward on first reading.
Thank you. Councilmember Demner?
I was just curious, this question's probably after the clerk. What's, let me estimate that administrative burden for implementing this tax? Just out of curiosity, if you've looked at that.
That is not a project I've gotten to as of yet. So I can't tell you what the administrative burden is. And I think it all depends on how residents or property owners want to rent these properties out. If it's a third-party like Airbnb or VRBO, the administrative burden will be much less versus if they're collecting the tax themselves. So that, I don't think there's a specific way to project that until we actually start seeing these rentals happen and start collecting the tax.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? So, um... Our council member Unger stepped away, but I guess we can go ahead and call the vote, please.
Councilmember Algin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Demner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight. May I please hear a motion to bring it to the floor?
I move to approve resolution number 20.
Twenty-nine.
We're tied during this period. I'm sorry. I don't, it's like, I'm not quite sure. Um, thank you. Resolution of the town of, okay, resolution number 2025-11-17. Wow. Let's start over. I'm going to approve resolution number 2025-11-11D, a resolution of the town of Mountain View, Colorado, appointing Charity Campfield as the councilor slash president.
I get it. Thank you. So this resolution formally appoints our town clerk treasurer and updates her job title, job description, and agreement that she has to work council has already authorized. As you'll recall, when Miss Campfield first joined us earlier this year, she was hired as a part-time interim town clerk, and her contract reflected that temporary part-time status. And since that time, council has given her, has taken two important actions. One, council approved moving her from part-time to full-time salary role, and you appointed her as the treasurer as well. So these decisions significantly expanded the scope of her responsibilities. And Miss Campfield has more than business to that challenge. Her professionalism, her judgment, her logistical expertise, and her capacity for a heavy and complicated workload have been invaluable for this town, especially given the breadth of duties contained in the clerk treasurer role for the community of our size. So tonight's action simply brings our documentation into alignment with the reality of the position and with council's prior decisions. The updated contract and job description reflect the full-time status and the combination of the clerk treasurer duties and the benefits that council previously approved. There's no financial impact, as the staff report noted. And this has already been included in the budget. And without, if council has any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Yes, in the charter-defined organizational meeting, wouldn't this appointment, wouldn't this resolution fall under the organizational need as opposed to passing this resolution now that we should table this until we have the organizational meeting?
We were just there.
Yeah, I can answer. It's a big question. So I think it's just a timing consideration. When you get to the organizational meeting, you'll do all of your appointments like we do annually. And we'll just include this resolution as well. So it would allow us to move forward with Charity taking the full-time position, updating her agreement accordingly. And then when you get to the organizational meeting, you'll go through your list of yearly appointments. And you won't have to go through the agreement again. We'll just update those annual appointments in accordance with what you're doing today or choose something differently.
Right. So we could be choosing, because we have new council, right? It could be different.
Yeah, so the organizational, like this doesn't bind you to something in the organizational meeting.
Okay.
But it fills the gap until then.
Thank you.
Now, Proton?
Is there any advantage to doing it now? I guess, I guess I'm not understanding exactly what the difference is between this and then just waiting, what, until then, when there's two new people at the table?
Yeah, I think the benefit timing-wise is that we have put this position into a limbo period for several months. And there was sort of a complicit understanding when you made the interim position that you'd made the decision whether it was going to be permanent several months ago. You have not done so. And so it's really just a matter of only made that interim decision and the resolution. There's this understanding that we would do this checkback, I think, within like three months. And we're past that period. And so it's really just a matter of trying to give some assurance to the position and in accordance with council's previous resolution appointing the interim at the time. But this is totally council's decision. It's a policy call. If you wanted to wait to the organizational meeting.
She's working under a contract right now that is, states that she's part-time and doesn't get benefits. So I don't think it's to, any, it's not appropriate for us to not update our contract.
Follow-up questions? Just, did anybody else want to talk? I already spoke once. So I just want to make it just clear that we're going to see two new council members. I thought that what we were going to do was that we were going to wait till after the election to do this because the new council would then want to weigh in on the position. But it's not like they're still going to have the opportunity in the organizational meeting. So it's just like giving her the benefit of the doubt and the benefits, literally, until that time.
Yeah, man, I think it's really aligning with, like aligning the position's title, job description, and agreement with council's previous direction that we didn't do. So when council, you know, kind of gave the nod of like, when we made the interim decision and we did the checkback, there was this discussion very briefly where council was like, yes, we want to continue on in the manner we're continuing with, with Charity. And at that time, we didn't bring back these three things, the job description and the agreement, the position title. So this just makes that change formalized. But again, it's council's decision. If you wanted to delay it, you could. We'd just still be in this limbo of the day-to-day doesn't reflect what is, her day-to-day does not reflect what you have approved.
I just have a question.
Councilmember Algin?
Thank you. I have a question. How long have we been out of compliance? How many months have we been out of compliance?
I don't remember when council gave the head nod to say that they wanted Charity to continue on in her permanent function. It was a couple of months ago.
I don't think we have that per se, but we appointed her as treasurer and didn't change her title. And to, and we have appointed her as, from part-time to full-time and didn't change her contract. And so the goal is just to have all, her job description, her job description also didn't get approved with changes. So the goal is just to have her title, her job description, and her title and her contract all comply with the workload that she's actually doing. Whether or not the, a month from now, two new people on this council can change that decision is entirely a different question. Like this is just for now. This body has a responsibility to make the document that, that we have an agreement with our clerk, who's clerk treasurer, who's doing a great job. Her contract should reflect that, the reality of her position. And her job description should reflect the reality of her position. So it doesn't change whether or not a month from now, the new council, you know, they get to make their own decision. But this council has a responsibility to address the issue right now at this table.
I think that it's unusual, I think that's the problem, is that it's unusual for the last meeting for exiting council to make a decision regarding an appointment of a official rather than waiting for the new council to come along.
The new council will make the same decision. They have, they will have the same documents to make the decision. The same, they've got to make the decision per the charter requirements at that meeting. That organizational meeting will be required for all of the appointments. So that does not change any of their responsibilities whatsoever. But this council has a responsibility. And kicking the can down the road for a month does not meet our responsibility to have a reasonable agreement that is actually reflective of the decisions that you've already made. Councilmember Lasher?
I understand where, like, Councilwoman Algin is coming from. I just want to really say that I think Charity's doing a phenomenal job. And I know that, you know, we had such a hard time with past people in this job. And she stepped in, she's working so hard, doing things above and beyond. I know that she has been offered other jobs and has turned them down to be loyal to our town. And I get that it's, you know, the new council's decision. But like, I just feel like this is really a slap in the face to her. And I know where I would be feeling if I was her right now. So I just personally want to say, you know, this council supports you and I think you're doing a great job. And wherever it lies, I just want to thank you for everything you've done for the town. First of all, that's very nice.
I have a comment, please.
Councilwoman Algin?
In no way is anyone saying that she's not an outstanding clerk and that we all support her. The question is, we are doing something that is unprecedented in regards to electing an official without having, and we have a lamed-up council here. And I understand what you're saying, and I, I understand that. But my point I want to make very clear is we appreciate her work. That's got nothing to do with it. We're talking about the position outside of the personality. So that's my point.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, Charity, that you have to deal with this. I don't think it's time to be playing chess with somebody's salary. I think that we have an obligation. Yes, this is my last meeting, this is Nancy's last meeting. But we need to be mindful, this is not a game, this is not a board game. This is somebody who's shown up and who's been doing the day-to-day during all of this fiasco. Let's give her what she deserves and stop playing around. You got the candidates that you want and they'll be here. But this is my job now, to make sure. I don't want to play and I don't want to hear anything from any of you that I'm talking right now. This is a matter of somebody's salary. She drives, do you know how far she drives to work every day? She comes from Wyoming to be here. Why are we playing with her money? Give her what she deserves. She has put on so many hats this whole time. If I were her, I'd flip the table, to be honest. Let's grow up. Let's do our jobs and give her coming.
Thank you. Councilmember Unger?
My understanding from what you said, and I apologize, it was water went down the wrong pipe. It wasn't part of the coughing thing. It just went down the wrong pipe and I couldn't get any air. So my understanding is she was told in three months she would be full-time. I mean, she'd be signed up, right? Is that correct?
I think we said, and I could be wrong, but I thought we said in the July meeting, when we made the interim position, correct me if I'm wrong, that council would look at it in three months and decide whether to go as someone new or make the decision to go permanent. And I thought as a part of just a council update, you said like, hey, we're three months in. Do you want me to, like, you know, do we want to continue on or not? And I thought it was unanimous, like, support. But am I misremembering?
I'm not remembering that exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. What I, what I'm noting is that we're not in alignment with, with her job description, her title. Like, the decision tonight has nothing to do with the decision next month. That's the main thing is that the decision tonight is simply lining up her job description, her title, and her, um...
And she had been told that it would be coming up in alignment, right?
I don't remember that. What I know is that her contract, I did not realize until recently that her contract that we signed hadn't been updated.
I look at it.
So we need to update our contract because you've approved a full-time position and she's working a full-time job. And so that simply just needs to be done.
I, I think I'm looking at it a little...
It changes nothing for next month.
A little differently than some of the other folks here. I see it as...
I see it as wrapping up the package and tying on the bow to get that, what was started, what was inferred, what was implied, what was told. Get the bow on that, and that's our job. And then another council comes on and up the renewal or whatever, then that's a separate issue. But I think this bow needs to be put on this package and settled.
Thank you. Councilmember Proton?
So just
I just recognize Mayor Proton.
I've already spoken, he's more than once and he's, he hasn't got spoken.
He has spoken.
I thought, oh, sorry, I thought he's spoken.
I will recognize Councilmember Debbner interim.
Sorry, I just didn't realize.
Mayor Proton?
So I just want to, just want to just crystal clear. So all we're, all you, all this does is brings her in line with the contract and sets her title and job to the correct the way it should be. It doesn't change what the council in one month can do and what her contract is then and what they decided she should be doing and what that contract is. Like they have, like, this slate sort of just wiped clean in December with the new council. Is that what my understanding is, correct?
That's correct. Councilmember Debbner?
So just so we have a clear understanding, it's, the contract says part-time, but she has been getting benefits in full-time pay
Correct.
in this interim period. So really, this is more just an administration, like cleaning up the paperwork kind of task.
Exactly, which is what we've been trying to say. Listen, yeah, sorry, listen. We are taking the prior decisions that have been made by council to appoint her as the treasurer, to make her full-time, and we are reflecting them in the contract and the title and the job description. So it changes nothing about what's actually happening with her other than it's council doing their duty to tie all the paperwork together. And it changes nothing about what happens at the organizational meeting. Councilmember Debbner?
I just want to say I'm in full support of administrative cleanup to reflect, you know, what we've agreed to have, you know, do and then having the paperwork match. I think that just makes a lot of sense and, you know, hindsight's 20/20, but we're here now.
Other questions? Thoughts? Mayor Proton?
Just, you know, I want to echo what I was inside the table that we were really, it's not any reflection on your work or any, I feel just like, it was a matter of clarifying what was being asked of the council.
And it's always been clear in my mind, and I do apologize for misunderstandings at the table, but they're not mine. And I recognize your work, and I wish you the best going forward. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll call vote?
Councilmember Algean?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Debbner?
Yes.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasher?
Yes.
Councilmember Unger?
Yes.
Motion passes to the chairman. Thank you. So we are at agenda item number nine, which is a discussion about our town calendar. So the calendar in your packet, this is just going off of how we've done it in the last several years. And we have to go through and set the meetings ahead of time so that then we can update the website with all of the dates. I want to make a, one request, the January meeting, we currently have that, the one in your packet, is saying that it's the 12th, and that's a, that's an error. It should have been, so the third Monday of January is a holiday. And we need to move that to the fourth Monday of January. So we were going to go to the 26th. And other than that change, does anybody have any questions or like corrections to the calendar asset, what's in your packet and assets present? Sorry, you said the 26th? Mm-hmm. January, instead of January 12th, let's make that the 26th. So the regular meeting rescheduled to the fourth Monday because of Martin Luther King Jr. Day on the third Monday. Councilmember Debbner?
So since we're setting, this would be set in the 2026 calendar schedule, I do think it would be wise to wait before we approve it and we have the two new council members sworn in so they can weigh in on the calendar's schedule, like, for the year that they're serving.
So this is, this is in front of you tonight because this is the responsibility of this council so that we can update the 2026 calendar. The 2026 calendar on the website is what everybody uses, right? Like, if the new council is not sworn in until December 1st, then you're not updating the calendar until January. And the last year when I did that, I got a lot of complaints. So I'm trying to get ahead of those complaints and get the calendar updated ahead of time. There's nothing controversial about these dates. They're the first Monday and the third Monday. Which they've always said. There's not, if it was a highly controversial issue, then I would not bring it to this council, but it's not. There's nothing controversial. So unless I misunderstood.
I guess I'm not so making, not so much making the point that it'd be controversial. It's just, you know, I would like to invite the input from the new council members, you know, in case they have any ideas.
But it's always the first and third Mondays, that's not gender. And when, when they get on, then they get to make those decisions. When there's a new council that's sworn in, then they make those decisions that are in front of them. But delaying decisions for the sake of delaying them, what's the advantage? How does it help the town?
I guess my thought is, you know, I just want to give consideration for new council members to weigh in on the schedule.
I understand that, but I'm asking, how does it help the town?
Are we talking about just the meeting, meeting dates, not like the, of the event dates?
Right now, we're just talking about the meeting dates. Let's, let's isolate it to that. Councilmember
So, okay, just the
Let me finish with Councilmember Debbner, how, so the meeting dates alone, you're comfortable with moving those forward with this current council? Or not delaying those?
I'd like to hear some more discussion from the table before I
So you're not sure, you want to hear how other people feel?
Yeah, I want to hear what other, how other people feel about the schedule.
I'm trying to understand, how does it help the town to delay the meeting schedule? From, because you're the one who brought that up specifically, so let's hear from you.
Well, I guess it's more so for the new council members that have been elected since we're
Right.
in this in-between period where, you know, the people have elected representative, representation, but they're not here to speak with that voice. I guess I was just raising the point that maybe we should wait.
Okay, I understand. Councilmember Algean?
May I ask if things were to change on this council, so you posted it on the website. If things were to change, dates were to change, how easy is it to notify the town that dates have changed?
Yeah, it's not hard.
It's not hard.
Which is one of the reasons why I'm saying, let's do our duty as an active sworn-in council to make a decision and not kick the can, because it doesn't serve the town in any way. And then a new council, when there's new people sworn in, they get to make decisions at that point that can be different, but it doesn't impact the responsibilities, it's not
So, so the new council will be locked in on the December 5th, I'm sorry, January 5th workshop. And December, and January 26th meeting. But future meetings, if things were to change, we could easily change those.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, so just talking about the council meeting dates. I think generally people are comfortable with where we are. The next issue is the town hall is closed dates. Those dates are dictated by the employee handbook that council approved already and our contracts with the, with the employees, like, our agreements, not probably contracts, but agreements with our employees, when they come on, they're saying they get these holidays. So our, that's very non-controversial. And hopefully we can just move through that one. And then the next one is we've looked at the holidays, or not the holidays, the events. That I do anticipate as a bigger conversation, that maybe we want to do that differently. But I'm trying to get a better sense from council at, at this meeting where you'd like to, where, what kinds of ideas you would like to have so that when we bring this back to the table, we've got something to go on for the event schedule. If it's ed, so think of it as a spectrum, right? Anything from the people at this table right now speaking, not anticipating, not trying to speak for people who are going to be sworn in at next month, but just speaking right now for the people who are sworn in, who have a responsibility to finish out their job. The spectrum of decision is, do we want to sort of anticipate continuing on the same kind of event schedule that we've done the last couple of years? Or would, does this council want to see a change in those events? I'm just asking for some general feedback so that I know what to bring back. Councilmember Unger?
I see no harm in having it the way it is. And then obviously, if things change and the new council says, hey, we don't want to talk about Tuesday, we want to cut back on some of these things, that can be done at that time. So this is a starting point and it's one every month except the skip there for holiday Santa. So it is a place to start. These are kind of in the same ballpark as what happened before. The new council can come in and say, don't want a car wash, the policeman shouldn't be out doing that. We don't want to talk about Tuesday, we're trying to save money, and that can be discussed. But this is a place to start.
Thank you. How do other council members feel? Councilmember Algean?
I just have a question. For these particular events, council members are required to attend, is that correct?
No.
So we're not required to attend the annual picnic or any event? I thought it was in, I thought we were expected to participate.
It seems weird that you wouldn't want to go to like, our signature event.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So council members are not required. So for example, if Tuesday, May 5th, I already have something going on, if, I just let you and Charity know?
You wouldn't even need to do that. Like, I, unless the, so the rules and procedures for the council will need to be agreed to. After the swearing-in, we'll have rules and procedures, and that will be a whole big conversation with the, with the body, with two people are different. So at that point, I bet council might make a decision where your attendance is required with events. But right now, that's not the case.
Okay.
We haven't, we don't have anything like that in our
Thank you.
We certainly encourage everybody to attend, but we don't require Any other thoughts about our event schedule and what, what this council might like?
I'm not too hard pressed, I know it'll probably change in about a month anyway, so there's no sense in me really adding to it.
At this point, would you continue?
It's a good starting point, but we'll stay that way out.
I'm really just trying to get our current council input. But we can't, we just don't know what's going to happen with the new, two new council people, and there's just no point in you know, like, there's just no point in trying to anticipate it. We're, we have an obligation right now at this table. And for Mayor Proton?
Seems like the standard.
Would you like to see similar, you guys continue?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, this is a starting point and people can always weigh in with them. Or to me, yeah.
Councilmember Debbner, were you anticipating the changes in our event schedule?
Not necessarily, I just, yeah. I was just wondering if we should have input with the new members.
We will have input with the new members, I'm asking this council.
Yeah, for this council, I mean, I think the schedule has, you know, I'd be okay with that. I don't have an issue.
Okay. Councilmember Lasher?
Great.
Okay. So recycle is, again, our recycling schedule is a week B and that calendar is in your packet and we'll get that on the website. And then the last, Councilmember Proton?
Just a reminder to residents that you come to us, you know, it's on Fridays and just, and if, so we know if it's going to be paused. I know I talked to you and it's not actually being paused this year, which last year it was paused for September 3rd.
It's not being paused?
Right, so
People don't know that it's on Fridays?
I mean, I feel like, I feel like if somebody wants to join, like, maybe that, I don't know, just, it would be helpful just keep it on the calendar, like the trashers, I think.
I think it is, but I'll, I'll double check that. It's not on the calendar?
It wasn't, but
Okay, I'll double check.
I appreciate it.
And, and, I'm sorry, did I? Please keep order. There's a reason why we do this and you're recognized before you speak. It's for the recording and it is important. Councilmember Algean?
I, I apologize if I missed the notification that it wasn't going to be paused.
There was no official notification. Mayor Proton Bailey asked me if it was going to be paused, I found out and it's not.
Okay.
And I answered her question. Okay, so the, there's two other pieces to the schedule. Mountain View, Mountain View Police Department will get together and make up their own minds about how to handle the forums, the Mountain View, the MVPB community forums and what dates. We've talked about that briefly. And then he'll bring those dates forward. But our community forums, so initially, several, four years ago, we started the, the mayor's community office hours. And we were doing, once a month, I opened my home up and I just had a community office hours on third Wednesday of the month. And then two years ago, I believe I had Councilmember Algean wanting to include the council members in these forums. So we started to do that. And then we also got some feedback from our community members that they would like to have some variation in dates. So have it maybe not be at my house every time, maybe have it be on the weekend sometimes. So we've got, done a lot of back and forth and changing of that schedule. And one of the things I've learned over the last four years is that consistency is key. And trying to set a, a standard that the residents can count on consistently is a, is a good goal. That the community will benefit if we can be consistent in this, in, in our decision about how to handle community forums. Community forums are important because they give the community an opportunity to interact with their elected officials in a way that is different than the three-minute public comment. Prior to a meeting or after a meeting, they have an opportunity to just have a conversation with us in a very low-key way, and then the council comes back to the table informed better. So I want to continue our forums. I would like feedback from this council about how you would like to see these forums in the future so that then I can bring something back at the next meeting and propose it for adoption. Mayor Proton?
I finally had the pleasure of attending the, the last community forum, and we had such a great conversation. I was, I was just, it was so many different residents and it was just, it was so fun to like, just kind of pie in the sky, like, what would you love to see happening in our town? And it was, it was just such a nice informal gathering that I definitely support the community forums.
Do you think they should be on during the week or on the weekend more than?
I feel like you have, I feel like you kind of have to do variation, you know, because like, some people work and then able to come to like a random Wednesday, or some people have like weekend obligations and they can't come then. And I feel like, you know, but yeah, setting it out, like, we're going to do a certain number that are on a weekday and a certain number that are like on a weekend, and I feel like you can go
What about having some be virtual?
Some
Be virtual on Zoom? So that the Because one time we had a virtual midday meeting and we got a whole bunch of people that participated. It was a special meeting that we hadn't anticipated. A bunch of people signed up and I, and participated, and I talked to them afterwards and they said that the reason was because of the time.
It was about lunchtime?
Mm-hmm.
I can see that being really cool.
Yeah. Any other feedback? Councilmember Debbner?
Yeah, for the lunch hour time, especially for those who are, you know, working not at home, it would be difficult to make that. I know I've, that's the challenge for me with the Wednesday schedule. So if there's a virtual option for that Wednesday, I think that would be a great way to participate.
I was just going to say, Saturdays are very hard for me, my kids are in seven thousand sports. So I will not be able to attend any of the Saturdays, so just a heads up.
So if we mix this up a little So if we mixed this up a little bit and added some variety, I've seen that all agreement.
I mean, Sunday possibly, but it's not like, I mean, people go to church sometimes. And then there's, there's like, we're on those names. I mean, competing with all kinds of different things. So having variation and be able to, to go at a different time that works for you.
Councilmember Alvin.
What about in the, uh, like warmer weather? During the warmer weather, we might be able to have outside at the park here in the evening.
Alvin, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Ash.
This is, doesn't really have anything to do with this, but kind of. Um, and I know it'll be for the new council, but I just spoke to a community member who said that they do not attend meetings, um, because they do not want to come into churches. Um, so, you know, maybe that is something that we can also just keep on our radar that, you know, we are limiting people who live in town because we're having to come to church.
Okay, so this one seems like this section of our schedule needs to be revisitive for sure with, with some additional ideas. But the, the scheduled meetings and maybe we'll hold off on the events as well. I'm going to go ahead and put the, let's see, a general thumbs up to putting the scheduled meetings on the calendar. And then if we need to change them, we change them. Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the mayor and council reports. I have a brief, um, issue that I want to discuss with you guys. But, um, I know Mayor Protem also has a report in the packet about Dr. Cobb. Did you want to go over any of that, Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to go over it real briefly and just, it was a lot of different meetings. And I just wanted to kind of take, take catch up with the attendance. You know, a lot of times there's stuff with the, the Denver Council of Regional Lords that isn't, or the Denver Regional Council, sorry, Dr. Cobb, that isn't, doesn't, doesn't really pertain to Mountain View. And then, and then some things crop up and you're like, oh yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And that's something that really pertains to Mountain View. And so I just wanted to take catch up with the notes, but, um, I wanted to make a special, um, like announcement that we are really very fortunate to have Charity. She applied to a, a grant that was a Dr. Cobb grant. And it's a no cost added for the town to apply for it. And it fits in with our code development stuff and zoning stuff. And it's just, it's really cool. And it's, it's just, I'm just really glad to be working with her. So I get to work with her on the report a little bit, which is great.
Thank you for all the hard work that both Mayor Protem Bailey and Councilmember Dennis did to help us be connected with, uh, Dr. Cobb. I think it's been really valuable and we see a direct way in which it's been helpful. So thank you.
You're welcome.
In the Gazette, um, in the last Gazette, I advertised the Heart of Mountain View competition. So it's a photo and art challenge to capture the spirit and character of our town. And this was initiated because when Councilmember, um, Decker and I attended a CML training together, one of the CML, uh, Colorado municipal employees came up to me and mentioned that there were no photographs, that there was no art from our town on their walls. And every other municipality that they represent has a piece of art on their walls. And so they invited us to submit something or just bring them a framed piece of art. And I thought, what better way than to see if we could have a little bit of fun with that and, and ask for, um, submissions from members of the community for art that they think represents the town, not the deal. But I didn't, so I put that in the Gazette and I stated that, uh, council would decide in November how that would be judged. So I'd like to get some feedback from this council, how you would like to see this particular competition handled in terms of judging the, the entry. And I see, I, I see three different options. I'll just put out a little bit. Um, it's not a big decision, it's a very small decision. So hopefully it's not something that we need to put off. Um, so one option would be that the, um, the submissions could be brought to the council meeting and everyone attending, the meeting could be given a certain number of stars. And then all of the submissions could be laid out in the back and everybody has three stars and they can put first, second, and third. And so it's kind of an anonymous, everybody participates who's at that meeting. So that was one idea that came to mind. Another would be that just staff and the council would do that at town hall. And so it'd be sometime in, you know, December or, um, January, we would have an opportunity to have a little event where council and staff do something like that with a number of stars and it's at town hall. Obviously that would be a public event as well. And then another idea would be we all love our Mountain View Police Department. And I thought, what better way to give them an honor to judge something like that? And it could be something where they have all of the submissions at town hall and each of the officers is given a certain number of stars. And then whoever has most stars is the piece that we donate, we frame and donate to CML. So those are just a starting place for some ideas from council. How do you feel? Councilmember Alvin.
And throw one thing in the mix, you could also have a children's competition.
That's a good idea.
And there's somebody who's not a child, but would contribute an art piece.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm counting on a submission from Reno. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was reading, do we have to, does it have to be only one piece of art?
But that doesn't mean that other, the other art can't hang at town hall. But CML just hangs one piece. Any thoughts on how you would like to judge the competition? Councilmember Decker.
I like the idea of including council, staff, and, uh, police force. Just everyone who's involved and serving their town, um, adding a star to, you know, participate.
Do you think it should be at town hall or at a, at a public meeting?
I kind of like the idea of like a separate event. So that way it'd be kind of more of a social activity and, you know, not so formal as like, you know, official meeting. Could be fun.
Other thoughts? Okay, I'll move that forward then, taking that input into consideration. Thank you. Any other reports from our council members during this time? Before we move on to our staff reports. Councilmember Alvin.
Uh, just one thing here in the spirit of cooperation. Laura and I are a committee of outreach into the community. We've done some legwork on it. And, uh, there's also been budgeting provided for it. And, uh, she and I were talking and we'll be happy with the new council. Uh, if there's two people that, not a one person that does the committee to share our knowledge and our legwork that we've already done, they may want to say, no, that's not for us, that that would be your choice. But, um, we are definitely able, uh, wanting to help them so they don't have to reinvent whatever we don't want to design.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. We will have a, a discussion about the committees at a future meeting, but it's good to hear that from our community engagement committee. Thank you. Councilmember Decker.
Is the committee, um, like discussion, is that going to happen at the organizational meeting next month?
Haven't decided yet. It depends on how, how dense the meeting is. Probably not. Because I think we need to get our feet before we do the, the committee discussion. That's a big discussion. We, we need to be working together as a team. Other reports from council? And we will move on to our staff reports. Chief Nesbit.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I just, uh, went, just a couple of quick updates. Um, so in the packet there, on, uh, November fourth, and the reason I mention this, I'll, I'll kind of go in this lead. Uh, November fourth, uh, we were called to edge order to assist them with a, uh, a possible barricaded subject, uh, inside of a house, uh, near 20th and Marshall. Uh, we were down there for a long, long time. Uh, uh, this person was, uh, reportedly had, uh, kidnapped someone, had been in the house for quite a while. Um, the victim of this whole thing identified the person. So they, we knew who we were looking for, we thought he was in the house. Um, uh, the, uh, regional SWAT team showed up, was there. Uh, edge order PD secured a warrant for the, for the address. They entered the residence. Uh, two people were taken into custody on multiple charges. The biggest reason I wanted to go into this, actually the charges, it's actually changed. They actually upgraded the charge to attempted homicide. Um, uh, the officers from Mountain View, they were there, we, and, and everybody involved that day. The officers from Mountain View acted like complete professionals that day. Uh, it was a, it was a pretty tense situation, kind of waiting to see, you know, who was inside that house, who was coming out. Uh, uh, the, uh, the victim in this case was a hundred percent cooperative. Uh, 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 she, uh, she said when she was in the house, there were weapons inside the house. Uh, we weren't sure exactly when we arrived on scene where this person was inside this house, if this is the right house, if it was a duplex, do we have the right side or not? I, everybody, everybody on my team just, I mean, we followed this to the letter. Uh, I could not be prouder of all of them. They did an outstanding job. On a lighter note, uh, we, uh, got the last of four ballistic vests. Sergeant Berman, Corporal Rodriguez, Corporal King, and Officer Nelson Ducky all received new vests this year through a grant program. Uh, they were paid for a hundred percent. Uh, it's a, uh, we have literally killed it this year with grants. I mean, we, I, I can't believe, I mean, we got approved for it, but it's, it was a, uh, the average cost for a vest is about $1,200. So it, uh, it helped out a ton to have a grant for all those. Um, we've already started the process for the same grant program for next year, uh, to get everybody else's replaced as well. None of their vests are expired at this point, but if we can get the grant to get those and get ahead of that, it's always a plus. Um, uh, again, everything else who's in the packet, uh, uh, do you might have any questions at all? There was a, other than the, other than the thing up at edge order, it was a pretty standard, well, nothing's a standard month in police work, but it's a, um, pretty uneventful. But yeah, it was a, I couldn't be prouder of all of them. They did an outstanding job.
It's really good to see all the regional cooperation.
You know, and just to add on top of that, it really, it truly was. I mean, we don't get the, we train a little bit together, but to have everybody in the same area, all on the same page, acting in the right manner. I mean, it was, it was just amazing to see it all come together. So it was really, it was really good.
Thank you.
I provided a written staff report for you guys in the packet. The only thing I wanted to touch on is to provide a little more clarification as to what Mayor Protem talked about, the grant that I had applied for. So it's kind of a two-piece grant. The first is it's going to be our land use code update. This grant in particular is going to take our new zoning code and look at the commercial areas we have, our transportation accessibility, and do kind of a livable centers study to see what these lots could offer to increase, um, commercial residential affordable housing. And then we can take that and use it as quote unquote, a guide to kind of pave the way for our future development. So that is the reason why I jumped on that grant. I met with them on Monday. The grant was due on Friday, so I had to turn it around very quickly.
That's amazing. It's going to be successful. Thank you. Thanks very much. Any questions for our board?
I'd give just one more comment if I could, please. That person sitting in the back back there, that's Reece Nesbit, she was back here doing it, or they're back here doing a, a, a paper for their college class on local government. That's why they're here today. And I really wanted to see their face turn that red when I.
So briefly, uh, there's just one important thing to highlight on the public works report. The sewer maintenance contract that council approved with PP Services has had to change somewhat because of some, um, work that they, they encountered, some problems in the roots growing into some sections of the sewer system. And so we're not lining sections like we were anticipating. We're doing, instead, we're TVing the entire town and repairing two sections. So there's going to be a change order for that. Um, so just keeping everybody up to date.
Can you please repeat that? I'm sorry. The TVing?
TVing, like for television, TV.
Oh, okay. Video recording?
Video recording.
Oh, okay.
And there'll be a presentation to council after this is done. So you'll get to see our sewers. It's exciting. And, um, they're being, I believe we reached the end of our agenda. They're being, you know, for the business tonight.
I moved to.
Or that's good, I saw you. I said eight thirteen.